Good evening. We'll call the Tuesday, February 7, 2012, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. At this point, I'll call upon Commissioner Renee Griffith to deliver our invocation. Please, ma'am.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time that we have together, and we do ask that as we conduct the county business that you give us wisdom and that we direct and conduct our affairs in a way that pleases you and is uses the resources that we have been given to the best of our ability and wisely. Lord, we pray for our men and women that are in this community, that are serving all over the world in the military. We just ask that you protect them, protect their families, and we thank you for their heart to serve. We also thank you for all the men and women who protect us here locally, that serve faithfully every day. Again, we pray for wisdom and thank you for this wonderful country that you have blessed us in, where we have the freedom to meet without fear. We thank you for the liberties that have been paid for by others. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Johnson, the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, I'll call on our county manager, Ron Smith. Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to the agenda from the staff this evening?
I do have one adjustment. I would like to add an attorney-client discussion under closed session, and that is under General Statute 143-318 dot 11A 3.
Okay. Are there any adjustments to the agenda from any member of the board? Hearing none, the floor is open for approval and adoption of this agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This evening, we'll move to appointments for the board, and we're pleased to have Mr. David Swan with us this evening, who will give us the annual report for Crossroads Behavioral Health Care for the fiscal year 2010-11. Welcome, Mr. Swan.
Thank you very much. Chairman Johnson, good evening, everyone. I actually have two items for you this evening. One is information exactly as Chairman Johnson has stated to present to you our annual report for the previous fiscal year. That's fiscal year 2010-2011. And I'm also going to be asking you to consider an appointment to our board or some appointments to our board at the end. So I'll just be brief. There's a lot of information that I've provided to you. It's in a green folder. This is a briefing book that we wanted you to have. We put this together every January to help you to understand all about what's going on with mental health. So it's got access information in it about what we do, services provided, all of the key information. We've provided that to our House and Senate delegation, as well as to each of you, and then other key stakeholders within the community of Iredell County. Secondly, there's an annual report that's entitled "A Report to Our Community and Building Bridges to the Future" that highlights all of the outstanding accomplishments that we have done for our community in the last year, the last fiscal year. What I'm going to do is just hit a couple of different items. We have had really an outstanding fiscal year last year with lots of services being delivered and a whole lot of things happening. Of course, a lot of big things, which are key here, that I'll mention in just a minute. Of course, number one is the provision of services to the people who are in need. We have over 100 contract providers here in Iredell County delivering care, lots of services, including services like mobile crisis services that are out in the community, residential housing services, outpatient therapy, hospital business, and different kinds of day and intensive programs, all to care for persons. And so, and we've served quite a few people, many thousands of people, in the last fiscal year. Another one of the highlights for 2011 was being selected by the Division of Medical Assistance to provide utilization management and review for the Community Alternatives Program, and that was another big accomplishment. That was a competitive bidding process, and we've been, we have been doing that now for one full year. We started in January of 2011. The county funds that you've provided to us have gone to provide crisis services and services to children with disabilities that had no other resources to provide those for them. We have, we have received once again national accreditation in the last week and a half. We're very pleased about that. Just had, just had our survey. And of course, you've been tracking on two big accomplishments that we have underway. One is the application for a Medicaid managed care program that will, that will change all of what we do essentially to make us really a fully capitated Medicaid managed care program, like what, like many other states in the nation have and experience. And to do that, of course, we have to accomplish a merger in order to get very large. And I know you've been following both of these projects for us. We began both of those in May of last year, and we are now well on our way. A couple of big dates coming up in the future. The merger is set for July 1 of this, of this year, and the launch of the Medicaid waiver for January 1, 2013. We also have been forming a whole new governance structure to govern this new organization. And as you might recall, this is an eight-county organization that will include the counties of Burke, Catawba, Iredell, Surrey, and Yadkin, and then the three counties, Gaston, Lincoln, and Cleveland. So all eight of those counties will form together this summer to form a very large mental health program. And this is going on all across our state. When I first started, 29 years ago, we had 41 mental health centers. And when we merged with Iredell County in 1997, that brought the number from 41 to 40 because of the dissolution of the former tri-county program. Well, now, we're getting ready. This summer, we will have 11 of these programs only across the state. So you see what's happened. Some of them have become very large. There's one on the East Coast that has 21 counties in it, so massive amounts of territory. So I'm glad ours isn't that large, but it's going to be large enough. We have been appointing recently the leaders to this new organization. We have, we have employed and appointed 11 new leaders to that organization. Five of those 11 have come from the Crossroads Program, so I'm quite pleased about that. And lastly, just about that, we have also a governance process that's been underway with our Boards of Directors that have been moving forward, forward with establishing governance processes, policies, bylaws, all those types of things that the governance body needs to do for a public organization. And I'm going to give you a little bit more of an update on that in just a minute. Let me highlight also a, a, a single piece of paper that was in the green folder that's kind of a buff color or like a, like a beige. This is our mid-year budget report. Essentially, it shows the revenue and expenditures, and I want to point out some things to you about our fiscal stability here. Because this is a mid-year report, you would expect that the revenues would be at 50% and expenditures would be at 50%. And you'll see, if you start on the right-hand side and track three columns over to the left under the percent realized, what you'll see is that just going down about a quarter of the page, that we've only received about 28% of the revenue as of the end of December. That's because of a two-month delay in payments that the state has with us. So they're two months in arrears all the time. That's been, we have, we, we've experienced that for probably six years, so it's not anything new. It's just something to watch. They always make it up at the end of the year, but that's why that it's lower. If you'll just go down that same column, you'll see that the first group of expenditures is trailing at 22.6%. That's our service administration. And then on provider services, where we deliver the care, that's at 47.5%, so more closely aligned with the 50%. You look at the very bottom, you'll see that, that the revenue for the month of December exceeded expenses by $103,477, and then year-to-date, still in arrears by $2,277,000. And again, that's directly related to the delay in payments from the state of North Carolina. So just moving forward, let me move to, to this request I have for you tonight, and of course, I'll take any questions that you might have. The request is around the governance of our organization again, and I placed at your place this evening a handout that looks like this. It's got a blue bar going from left to right on it, and, and it's dated in February, so this was not mailed out to you, but this was, that's your place this evening. What we need to do is to have the new board of this new organization, which by the way has a new name, Partners Behavioral Health Management. We want to have that new board fully appointed by April 1st in order for them to start to get ready to launch the new organization this summer on the 1st of July. Iredell County gets four members to this new board, four appointments, one of those being the county commissioner. So what I've provided for you is a couple of pieces of paper to guide you, and I'm going to ask that you consider these appointments by the end of March. So this gives you a couple of months, and just want to get it on your schedule so that you'll be aware. On the front page, what I've done is I've cited the general statutes that govern and specify what type of board member and what characteristics that they should have. I've also attached one page below that, a copy of those general statutes. It's 122C dash 118.1, and then 119. I've put on the front of here the current board members that we have seated, and also their attendance patterns there in the second column. And you'll note over on the right again that proposed board members for Iredell have, are actually four members there. What we want you to do is to appoint them to staggered terms. Staggered terms means that, that under the statutes, that each board member serves a three-year term, but because we don't want everybody rotating off at the same time, we want a group like about a third of the board members at one year, a third at two, and a third at three. So when you do make your appointments, if you would consider breaking those up like that, that would be, that would be helpful. So again, I provided the statute for you. And then there's another attachment on the, which is item, actually, it says page one at the bottom. You'll actually see the, the county population for each county, and the percent of that population by each county, and the total number of members, and the number of county commissioners, and then the number of citizens. And again, Iredell County gets four. On the last page, the front and back, you'll see some boxes. And in those boxes, what we've done is try to make this easy for you, is to fill in the blank. So as you look for board members, if you want to apply them to a certain box, which would help us out, we've got to fill up all these boxes with the numbers of board members. And so we've already had, we've already had three to be appointed. Last week, in Catawba in Burke County, if you look on the very last page, they appointed two of the hard-to-find board members. One is a psychiatrist who lives in Burke County, and the next one is a person who is a family member of someone with a disability. So that's, two of the requirements now have been met, and you'll find those names, one of them is on the right, Dr. Anthony Frasca, and then to the left, you'll see a gentleman by the name of Danny Graves. Both of them serve currently on the Mental Health Partners Board. One represents Catawba County, and one comes from Burke County. And then last night, Surrey County appointed one of its board members, Barbara Anderson, to fill the child block, which is on that first page where the squares are. And you'll see there was one slot there. She, she is a retired DSS director from Surrey County, also serves on the board currently, and so her name is going to be appearing in there. So in other words, what we need is three members to be appointed in addition to the county commissioner to fill some of these blocks. We've created a central way for every, for all those names to come in, and so I'll be, I'll actually be receiving those names from you, and then I'll try to plug them in where we need. Hopefully, we'll make them all fit, and it's like a puzzle to try to make it all work out pretty well. So there you have it, annual report from last year, a little status report of the last six months, and then also my request for some board appointments by the end of March will be perfectly fine. Chairman Johnson, I'll turn it over to you, and if you want me to take any questions, I'll be happy to do that.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Swan? Now, at this point, if it's agreeable, Mr. Swan, I'm going to instruct the county manager to, so that this board will have adequate time to consider these appointments. I'm going to ask him to put on our first meeting in March, an announcement of these vacancies, and then our second meeting in March, we'll make an appointment of these folks. Is that's agreeable to everyone? We've got some good members on our delegation. I think you'll agree with that, and it looks like we're going to have to disappoint somebody.
We have some excellent members that represent Iredell County. Yes, sir.
We want to be as deliberate in that process as we can.
Including the county commissioner that serves on our board.
I think he's an exceptional member of that board. If that's agreeable, that'll be our schedule.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Great.
Right. Any, any questions, Mr. Swan? Hearing none, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you for coming. Our second appointment for this board this evening is Ombudsman Cindy Kincaid on the annual reports for the Nursing and Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Mr. Kincaid, there she is. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Kincaid, Regional Ombudsman with Centralina Council of Governments, the Area Agency on Aging in Charlotte. And I'd like to thank Anna Rice from the Council on Aging, as well as Donna Osborne and Kelly McMillan from the Department of Social Services, who are our adult home specialists, who serve as our backup agents for this committee. I'd also like to thank the commissioners for the volunteers that you have appointed to work on behalf of the Iredell County residents living in our assisted living and nursing homes. Let me share briefly the role of the ombudsman in working with your committees. We have roughly about 200 volunteers in our nine-county region, and they are part of over 1,800 statewide volunteers. Iredell County volunteers serve both the adult care homes and our nursing homes. These volunteers receive an initial 15 hours orientation and in-facility training, and then they receive an ongoing eight-hours training throughout the year. We do that in a quarterly basis there at the DSS office in, in Statesville. The Regional Ombudsman Program provides several services to the volunteers themselves. We conduct their quarterly training. We provide technical assistance and explanation and possible interpretations of the North Carolina federal, North Carolina and federal regulations, and making sure that they understand the residents' rights that they work so hard to protect. We provide assistance in organizing residents or family councils within many of our homes, and we offer guidance and direction in any complaint resolution that our volunteers may handle on our behalf. The volunteers are mandated through the North Carolina General Statute and are legislatively empowered to serve as resident advocates, making them the only agency that has the resident as the focal point for their work. They accomplish this advocacy by making quarterly visits to the homes to discuss residents' rights directly with the residents themselves, working closely with administrators, families, and residents on specific concerns or requests that residents may be experiencing, and developing special projects. Region F has grown to over 15,000 long-term care beds, making it the largest in the state. Iredell County has approximately 740 nursing home beds and about 775 adult care home beds. We have not experienced any growth in either our nursing homes or our assisted living facilities. We have had a couple of facilities that have opened some special care units within their existing buildings, and then we have Heritage Place, which converted over the last year to year and a half to being exclusively for a special care unit for folks with dementia. I'd like to highlight some of the work done by these committees from the report that was submitted for your review. Every year, we host a residents' rights celebration, and this would not have been possible without the financial support granted from your recommendations to Iredell County. We will, of course, be requesting that support again, as we'll be working with them. We appreciate the attendance of the public officials who take time out of their busy schedules to attend. If you weren't able to make it this past year, we really encourage you to come and join us this upcoming October. We hold it usually the second Wednesday of October every year. Our committees made additional visits to area facilities outside of what they were mandated to do. They provide supplies, activities, helping to coordinate community volunteers. Our nursing home committee worked with Ben Garrison from ICATS to coordinate our transportation for our residents to increase our participation in our celebration this year. And we'd like to thank Ben and the drivers who made it possible for some residents to attend our event that have not had opportunities in the past. The group benefits from the attendance of our adult care home specialists, Donna Osborne and Kelly McMillan from the Department of Social Services at our quarterly training, providing us valuable information of their work within our homes, and allowing our volunteers to be able to share some of the information we see and, and concerns that we address back to them. Some of the challenges, though, that our committee has identified is that not having a full committee makes it really hard to complete this task. There are currently multiple vacancies on both our adult care home and our nursing home committees. So if you know of any folks that might be interested in volunteering, we would love to speak with them. I know that Jean has been working really hard to get us some new volunteers. We've had some recent ones appointed. I think we have actually a couple more even maybe for tonight or later this month to, to be considered. One of the other challenges that the, the group struggles with is the reluctance of some of our facilities to follow through on suggested changes brought forth by the committee. This group works really hard to bring concerns forward to the administrators, and sometimes it is disheartening when you, you seem to be bringing the same concerns forward on a regular basis. One of the other things that we've experienced is a rise in the number of younger residents with mental illness who are calling our assisted living facilities home. And the challenges that this group of residents posed to both staff and other senior residents, we've also been working very closely with the Crossroads folks, as, as well as some of the other entities in dealing and identifying some of the, the IMDs, and, and really working to make sure that those residents that are placed in our facilities are in appropriate locations. Finding volunteers who are willing and capable of actually spending the time that's required fulfilling the mandates of this committee prior to their appointment can be a challenge also. And I know Jean has done a fabulous job of helping me get some of those applicants ahead of time, so we can kind of screen them rather than have to appoint folks that are not capable of fulfilling the time. We're trying to make sure that those folks that we bring to you are ready and, and able to serve. The committee would like to invite each of you to attend a facility visit with us. We visit all of the homes every three months, so there's lots of opportunity. We'll be glad to, to give Jean a schedule and, and would hope that some of you might take an afternoon and, and go see what some of our residents experience in our homes and the great work that your committees are doing for you. Anybody have any questions? You should have received an actual copy of the annual report itself in your packets. I'm not going to go over it specifically.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Kincaid?
Yes. Did you say there are 700 and some nursing home beds in the county? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
And how many of the, the assisted living and adult care?
They are almost identical, actually, in Iredell County. There are 700, 740 nursing home beds and 775 adult care home beds.
Is that the rest home, are they, the rest home beds included in that last figure, too?
Yes. The assisted living title includes the rest homes, the family care homes, which are small, six beds or less, but follow still the assisted living rules and, and are licensed as assisted living facilities.
Are those numbers sufficient for our county, or what, are we experiencing?
We actually, currently, most of our facilities have some vacancies, so a lot of times, unfortunately, unless they are running at 100% occupancy all of the time, the number is relatively close.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, Ms. Kincaid, we thank you for the service you provide to the citizens of our county, and you've been a blessing to these folks here in providing that service, and we appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
I see no public hearing scheduled this evening, so we'll move now to administrative matters. And Mr. Smith, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Joey Roskowski with our planning department has both memo number three and memo number four, so I'm going to just turn it over to him.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Johnson, members of the board. First item we have before you tonight is an easement request by Mack Molding Company. Mack Molding is undergoing another expansion, and what this expansion, it's actually detailed on a map that's included in your agenda packet. It's actually just a storage area expansion to the rear of the facility. But given the requirements of the North Carolina State Building Code, they're actually required to have a 60-foot clear, open space that goes beyond the expansion, 60 feet beyond that expansion. And this can be achieved if there are other properties or things of that nature involved. This can be achieved through the application of an easement. And on that map that's in your agenda packet, especially that second one on the bottom half, it shows that there's a very small triangle of the piece of property located in the southwest corner there that's owned by Iredell County. And this actually has the West Iredell Water Company water tower on that site. We've communicated with West Iredell Water Company, and they agree that this easement would not impede any of their plans that they have for development on the site. It would achieve the desired open space easement that Mack Molding Company needs in order to pursue this expansion. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Roskowski? Mr. Pope, I see that you prepared this document. Do you?
I did, in fact, prepare it. It's fairly standard easement. I put some language in there that the easement would be reconveyed back to the county at such time as the building code no longer required that 60-foot clearance.
Okay.
And also, forgive me, we also have Representatives Frank Bumgarner and Wayne Harris with us tonight, should you have any questions of them. They're from Mack Molding.
Any questions of Roskowski, or these gentlemen who are with us this evening from the board? Pretty straightforward request, it looks like, to me. Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Johnson, make a motion to approve the request.
Motion to approve, and Vice Chairman Norman, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Your next item tonight is to consider adopting a resolution of support to the town of Mooresville's application of the State of North Carolina Mobility Fund to convert Exit 36, which is the exit where Interstate 77 and Highway 150 intersect in the Mooresville area to a diverging diamond interchange. Back in 2009, 2010, the North Carolina State Legislature appropriated funds in this mobility fund, fund projects that would improve mobility on a regional and statewide basis. And through talking with area, regional transportation organizations and jurisdictions, we find that there is widespread regional support for this diverging diamond interchange at 77 and 150. This year, only $45 million is available statewide. Therefore, this $8 million project seems to fit quite well with the standards that the Mobility Fund requires of, of a project. I can confirm that last night, the town of Mooresville did adopt their resolution, which is included in your agenda packet. Also, the Lake Norman Rural Planning Organization will be considering this tomorrow, and there's also support from other regional RPO organizations in our area that will be adopted next week. So this project has significant regional support.
Okay.
And I'll pause at this point to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Took me a couple of looks when we went to propose this thing, how it would work, but actually it makes a, a lot of sense. But running a red light in one of these intersections would create a lot of, a lot of difficulty, not that it, it doesn't anyway, but, but it'd be something new and different, and redoing that whole Exit 36 would be almost impossible at this point. So this, this seems like a good way of getting the flow. So this, this seems like a good way of getting the flow moving through there a lot better.
Yes, sir. It actually allows for free-flowing access entering and exiting the interstate. So it should be, they actually, the Mobility Management Group out of Raleigh estimates that this will reduce congestion by about 50% in that area.
Didn't just propose the interchange the same as they want for 21 down here, 40 also?
Forty and 77.
Forty and 77. I think this one's for 21 down there, they're going to build one of them.
It's also going in Cornelius. This is also going out of Cornelius.
Yeah. I think we're right.
Yep. Okay. If there are no other questions, the floor is open for a motion, and the request is to adopt the resolution for multiple jurisdictional support for this project.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we adopt this resolution to support the divergent diamond interchange at Exit 36.
All right, we have a motion for approval from Commissioner Robertson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bill Furchess, our tax collector, has got the next two items, which are memo five and six.
Good evening. Tonight, each year in February, I'm required by law to, general statute, to present or come to the board and present a report of the total amount of unpaid taxes for the current year. Earlier tonight, I gave that to Gene. It shows we still have about $9.7 million in unpaid taxes. Don't get excited, that also includes the Mooresville, Harmony, Troutman, and other taxes. We got about 6 million. We're currently at about 92.02% collected, which is 29 basis points above last year. So we're moving forward, at least. At the same time, I present you this report, you are required to set a date for advertising. We're requesting Friday, March 9th as advertising date for unpaid tax leads. We will be sending out the second notices this Friday.
Do the second notices tell the people that their name's going to be in the paper?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Tells them when they have to pay it by, and the date it'll be advertised.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Furchess? The request before us this evening is to establish a advertising date of March 9th, 2012. So if there are no further questions, the floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Next item I have concerns a, an agreement with a tax foreclosure attorney. We have always foreclosed on properties, but we've been sporadic, and we have done it in a limited fashion. Mr. Pope and I have tried to get us up into, get us into the way normal, most major counties do. We're trying to get a standardized foreclosure type situation where we are doing foreclosures on a regular basis. We searched around the state and found a fellow named Mark Bardell, who has a contract with 16 cities and counties in North Carolina, including Forsyth County and our neighbor Cabarrus. And he came highly recommended. Mr. Pope, LaRissa Erkman and I, whoever, LaRissa's an associate of Bill Pope's, met with Mr. Erkman several months ago, and after that also had a conference call with Mr. Erkman, and we have had a large number of emails, and we've come to an agreement on the contract. We anticipate that it will cost the county nothing. However, as you know, some things will, we will still have some sort of legal expenses here, but we don't, we plan on all legal expenses to be paid for someone who is being foreclosed. Also, if you're concerned that we will be throwing people out of their homes, Mr. Bardell told Bill and I that in his 25 years of doing foreclosures, he had basically foreclosed about a half a dozen properties, or a couple of handfuls. In our case, the last few we've done have mostly been nuisance properties, and Mr. Pope will tell you that I have given him properties that are, that are unable to be foreclosed on, they're so tough. We're currently doing a couple for the town of Harmony, and that's about it right now, just a few small ones. It's a, it's a tough job, and Pope, another thing, we need somebody that has no local ties, there's no conflicts of interest. And Mr. Pope, his firm is a large, one of the largest firms in Iredelle County, and certainly the best known, and they, there are a lot of potential conflicts. So we have presented you with this contract. Now, it's a two-year contract with a automatic renewal for two more years. The reason we had to go two years to start with was because foreclosures are not something you can just go and take them in there and do them in a matter of a month or something like that. Sometimes, some of them will take six months, some of them will take two years. But it does take a lot of time, and takes a lot of effort and a lot of research, and that we're not able to do. Our plan is to try to give them 50 properties every quarter. I'm sure Mr. Pope would be glad to add anything if you'd like to hear from him.
Yes, if I could. We checked this gentleman out very carefully, and he's a true professional and comes, comes highly recommended by everybody we spoke to. This is a much more aggressive technique than we've used in the past. He has it down to a science. I think, I don't, I don't have any reservation about this. I think this is a professional way to handle tax foreclosures.
Any questions of Mr. Pope or Mr. Furchess?
Did you say you want, your plan is to turn 50 per quarter over to him?
Yes, ma'am, that's what our plans are.
How many properties currently are on the books that could be foreclosed on for tax purposes?
Well, I mean, that's, that would be very hard to say. A lot of times when we get air properties, sometimes it takes several years to settle estates, those type things. We leave them alone, as long as there, something's processing. But I would say, oh, I'm sure we've got 1,000 or more. But you have to understand, a lot of this property is not sellable. So, you know, you can't sell a ditch. And I have, I have to have a buyer, and I can't, because if nobody buys it, it belongs to us. And then there's going to be a lot of people upset with me when we're sitting with a lot of property we've got to maintain. So we have to be careful that we have somebody that will buy this property.
And we've had very few foreclosures.
That's correct. One thing, what we're trying, one of the things we're trying, oh, there's another aspect to this. We have, quite frankly, used foreclosure as a threat, and it worked very well, especially with banks, mortgage company lien holders. Now, they don't care. If you say, we're going to foreclose, they say, what's the foreclosure date? Now, why they want to pay the attorney fees, I don't know, but they will not do it until you've got a date of sale. And so it's put us in a, in a position where it's, we have no, just have no punch.
You had to call the bluff, didn't you?
Yes, sir. They, yes, they called me a bluff.
I think one thing that will happen is if you file 50 foreclosure actions in Iredelle County, word will go out. You'll have to file, you'll have less that you'll have to file in the future.
Well, we're trying to get the collection rate up, and Manager Smith wants it to 97 and a quarter for this year, and we plan on doing that, and we plan on getting, doing better for the next year, but by 2014, June 2014, we plan on being 98%. But I need help.
Any other discussion or questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a little heartburn while going out of county, but since Mr. Furchess and Mr. Pope seem to think this gentleman is the one way to go, I'm going to make a motion that we go with, as their recommendation.
Okay. Motion for approval of this request comes from Commissioner Mitchell. Is there any discussion on his motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion passes 4-1.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next request we have is from Steve Messick with the library for approval to apply for a technology grant from the state library, and this is memo number seven.
Good evening. I'm requesting approval from the board to apply for an LSTA technology grant from the State Library of North Carolina. We would use this grant to buy 10 early literacy computers for the libraries. These are computers that are designed for young children, kindergarten through second grade. They have over 50 different software programs on them to provide educational content for children. We would be buying 10 of these. The total grant amount is $29,410, or the total project amount, excuse me. The grant amount is $23,528. Now, there is a 20% matching funding required for this, but the matching funds are going to be supplied by our Friends of the Library groups. There are three Friends of the Library groups, one for Statesville, one for Harmony, one for Troutman, and they have agreed to supply the matching funds of a total of $5,882. So we would have six of these computers in Statesville, two at Harmony, and two in Troutman. And we're really excited about the opportunity to partner with these volunteer organizations to provide this service to the children of Iredelle County, so there would be no county funds required for this grant. And I'll be glad to answer any questions any of the board members may have.
Got a general question that, this is, this is for computers for the, for kids.
Yes.
Is this for really young children or school-aged children?
This is for children ages through toddler through second grade. We do have computers now for older children. These computers are specially designed for young children. They're also, the same types of computers are used in schools. We've also checked with other libraries that use them. These have, like I said, educational games that are very appealing to younger children. The computers have touchscreens, so it's very easy for children to interact with them. And these computers would not have any internet access, they would just be for computers to use these games. We did have these types of computers at the library in Statesville and in Harmony, but because of the age of those computers, we haven't been able, most of them are inoperative now, and we haven't been able to replace them, but they were very popular. So this will allow us to provide that service again.
These questions may not be directly related to this particular project, but just out of curiosity, the computers that, that younger children are handling or dealing with, what sort of lifetime are you seeing on those? You said the other ones are broken.
Normally, we plan for at least five years. We bought replacement computers over the past two years, in 2009, 2010. Those replaced the computers that we bought when we moved into the library in 2005. So under normal conditions, we, we expect four to five years. We do get five-year support warranties for all the new computers we buy, so they last at least that long.
Do you find that school-aged children are coming in and are having to use your computer, the computers that are available through the library to do homework assignments?
Yes, they do use them.
Is that a big draw? And what is your supply relative to the demand?
Well, we received a grant, one of these same technology grants from the state library year before last, to buy 20 computers for the children's area for older children, middle, elementary up through, you know, middle school, to use for just that type of purpose, to do research and work on projects and so forth. So we do have quite a demand for that.
And then like five children there a night, or 15?
Well, we have 20 computers, and they're, they are, we limit the amount of time. You can be on those computers, you can only be on them two hours, and they're pretty well, from 3:00 in the afternoon until probably 7:00 at night, they're pretty well full all the time.
Really? What, if you had to guess, what would the, how many would you need to serve that? How many, how many stations would you?
I think the 20 that we have now is adequate.
Is adequate, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Are there any other questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the request.
Motion to approve this request to apply for the EZ LSTA technology grant. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
I have one suggestion. Mr. Smith, maybe I'm, I'm off base or not. It seems like if we have computers that don't work, and I know the school systems have vocational programs, and, and the folks who fix computers seem to think it's a whole lot easier than those of us who, you know, get the screws off the back, and I have no idea what I'm looking at once, once I'm in there. But I wonder if we could somehow partner up with the, with the school system, that just county, I mean, countywide, as we retire some, you know, if they, if there's still a life that could be, you know, if you have a $1,000 computer and it needs a $20 part, I mean, you can always, or in many cases, you can cannibalize one computer for parts. Just seems like we, maybe we could use those units in the library or in other areas. I understand the ones that are hooked into the, to the county networks have to have certain speed and memory requirements and stuff like that, but, but if we, if the libraries have standalone stations, and they are worked pretty rigorously, and, you know, it may be that, that may be a source to provide additional, additional computer stations, not just for the Statesville library, but for the other three in the county. So it's just food for thought.
Okay.
The, the next item is a request for a discussion or, and/or decision regarding a request from the NCACC for assistance in identifying federal issues of statewide importance, and I believe this was initiated by the chairman?
Yes, sir, it was. I got a email from our clerk, Ms. Moore, requesting how to dispose of this matter, and I read over the, I think, the entirety of the email, and I thought it would be best if we would bring this to the attention of the board and gather input from the board on what type of, what your opinion was on the issue stated in this email, and also receive any input into what any, any other issues that the board may be concerned about.
Was the desire to, to afford only one or two issues, was that yours? Because I didn't see that in their email.
No, it was not my, not my intention.
NCACC.
They requested that? I just don't remember reading that.
Okay.
Second page, first name.
Ah. So if you want to have input into the issues they've got, if you want to have two other issues, if you want to do four or five, we'll send them and let them sort it out.
As opposed to taking one or two individual bills, from my perspective, I think there's two, there are two categories that, that my thoughts fall in. Number one, or, or, excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry, really, three. One is a blanket opposition to unfunded. One is a blanket opposition to unfunded mandates, period. I don't care how good of an intent it is, if, if the state says it's a good idea and the county should pay for it, I don't care how good idea it is, I'm against it. If something's a good idea and we're going to pay for it, we're the ones who ought to think it up and do it. Or they can recommend it, but they should not mandate that we spend anything. Number two is, is I believe that we should not be telling the state and federal governments that they shouldn't be cutting spending, just as a rule. They're having a hard time cutting spending, and I don't want to contribute to that, to that, to their difficulties. And then, the last thing is, this isn't so much with the federal government, but it is with the state, is that they've given tax breaks, they've given county tax breaks to people. And again, if the state or federal, if the state wants to give a tax break to state taxes, that's fine, that's their business. The federal government wants to give a, federal government tax break to somebody, that's their business. But they shouldn't be giving people blanket exemptions or tax breaks on county taxes, and we have seen that happen, and I think as a blanket, again, I don't care if it's a good idea or a bad idea, you know, I'm against other people reaching into our revenue stream and taking their credit for it. So, those were just kind of the three generalizations, and you can apply that to almost any of these, you know, the EPA ozone standards, that's an unfunded mandate for our businesses, not necessarily for the county. And I've said this before, and I'll say it again, the problem is not that we don't have people at state and federal level that are unwilling to cut spending. Our problem is, is they, first, what they need to cut are the laws and the regulations that require that the money be spent. If they, if they did, that's the hard work. The easy work is just to appropriate less money. The hard work is to change the legislation that dictates that money must be spent, because when they don't change that legislation and they just cut their own budgets, typically, you know, in the county, we're executing state programs. If they just cut their budget, but they don't cut the requirement that the money be spent, we're stuck holding the bag. So, my emphasis isn't on what people set the tax rate at, what they set spending at, what they set cuts in spending at. What I want to see them doing is cut the requirement to spend, for some of these programs, to spend money. I mean, if they just cut that, everything else would take care of itself.
So, what are the two issues we're going to talk about? Could we sum it up this way, Mr. Robson?
I listed four, but... But the number of times that the General Assembly has cut into our revenue stream has been, that's probably of the, of the four, that's the least frequent.
Well, we're dealing primarily with federal issues here, so I think it would be... I'd say the new EPA ozone standards. We could say it more comprehensively, and we could say abolish the EPA and replace it with an economic opportunity or administration.
I would put the issue, oppose federal budget cuts to counties without corresponding cuts and federal mandates. That would be my top one.
Okay.
Which they never give us money to run the county anyway. They give us, that's all for special grants and stuff.
Yeah. Okay, issue number one, if everyone's agreeable, will be oppose federal budget cuts to counties without corresponding cuts and federal mandates? Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Anybody have another one?
You say federal and state budget cuts.
Yeah.
I think that, we're, we're more impacted by when the state does that than when the federal government does that.
Do you think Congress is going to start listening to anything they haven't been doing? We're just in the hope that they might. Could I, could I do the, could we depart from their recommendation and do this, and we'll call it the Idle County Economic Opportunity Platform? And it would be quite simply stated that, I'm thinking really big here, y'all just indulge me. Charter of the Federal Reserve shall be changed, their sole function shall be sound money. We'll cut the corporate tax rate from the highest in the world of thirty-five percent to seventeen point five percent to encourage the capital development in this country. We will repeal Sarbanes-Oxley, and we will repeal Dodd-Frank. If, if in two years that doesn't get you a half a million jobs a month, I'll buy you a steak dinner.
You did go big.
Well, they're not going to listen to us anyway, shoot for the moon.
I don't, I don't have a strong feeling. I don't think it really matters, so...
Okay. Well, it makes me feel good, so it's on the agenda.
It makes you feel good, you'll go for it.
Okay. Did you get that, Ms. Moore?
Yes, sir.
We'll just call that, we'll just humbly call that the Steve Johnson Economic Recovery Act. Okay.
Said in, said quite humbly, much humility.
Okay. All right. Yeah, let's vote on that. Those will be our two agenda items. If there are no additions, then we'll accept those two. I move we vote on our two additions that we just made. Okay. All right. We'll adopt those two. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Your first bill named after you.
Okay.
The next item we have is a request from Matt McCall, our Register of Deeds, for a letter of support regarding a satellite in Mooresville office, and this is memo number nine.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and Mr. Johnson, members of the board. I'd also like to thank the Register of Deeds staff members who have stuck around through this riveting meeting and are still here to offer their support. I'm here tonight to request your formal support in the form of a letter for legislation allowing for a satellite office in Mooresville, a Register of Deeds satellite office in Mooresville. After consultation with Mr. Pope's office, we will need legislation to allow this to happen. I don't want to bore you with details, but it's because North Carolina is a race-to-record state. There are currently a couple of counties, and you should have a copy of the bill in your packet, showing that Guilford and Moore Counties currently have two offices. They opened their offices in the late eighties, and computer technology is not where it's at now. That because we are a race-to-record state, documents have to be indexed and kept in order, because you have to preserve the integrity of that deed to make sure the property is conveyed to the proper owner. So, I'm eyeing the space in the Government South Center, formerly known as, well, commonly known as the Old Hospital. Environmental Health has just vacated a small office on the bottom floor near the courthouse and sheriff's office. I do not, do not anticipate the need to hire new employees. To be fair, I will need to purchase a few office, pieces of office equipment, like a high-volume laser printer, a hand seal, a cash drawer. The carpet could probably use to be replaced, and the walls could use a new coat of paint. But I can absorb these costs in my current budget that you've already given last, well, for this current fiscal year. As far as ongoing costs, we will need to have high-speed internet access and four phone lines. According to three quotes I've gotten on that, it'll be about a hundred and sixty-five dollars a month. However, I hope to offset these costs, because currently, the Mecklenburg County courthouse is not a friendly place to visit, and you have to visit a courthouse to get a marriage license. We have customers already from Cornelius, Davidson, and Huntersville that drive sometimes to Statesville to get the marriage license. Currently, we do about a thousand marriage licenses a year, with our county of a population of about a hundred and sixty thousand. Those towns south of us combined have a population of about seventy thousand. I'm hoping we can pick up some of their business and continue our proud tradition of doing things better in Idle County than in Mecklenburg County.
Let me be the first to predict that that will now be one of the reasons why we should support a train.
You what?
They will, they will say that that's one of the reasons why we should support a train.
At this point, I really don't anticipate a lot of costs, like I've said, but I'll pause to take any of your questions.
Well, while your desire to promote holy matrimony is admirable, I don't think you're going to get a whole lot of revenue from it, but it still is a good service to the community, and I applaud you for doing it at a reasonable cost.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is the block good for traffic, do you think?
I think so. When you first walk in, the main canopy, where I guess the emergency room used to be, I think Health Services is to the left, and this will be to the immediate right when you first walk in. It's a good space, it's a small office, but it shouldn't take much to get it up and running.
And how often will it be manned?
Forty hours a week. I have two employees, one lives in Mooresville and one commutes from a town nearby, that are both on board, and it just makes sense for them to, to work there. And I plan on having office hours there a couple days of the week and spend time down there, too.
Good. You'll be ready to go July the first, if you can get the legislation passed?
Hopefully. I'm hoping this letter you, you all do sign off on, I can send with Chris Carney and Representative Mills, so they can introduce local bills, and hopefully it'll just breeze through.
They'll have to run local legislation when they go back, they're not going back to May.
Yes, sir.
So, probably earliest you get it would be July the first, if it could fast-track through there.
We'll, we'll see, but the first thing I need to do is cover my loose ends with you all to make sure you're okay with it.
Sounds like a smart move.
I believe we have Commissioner Rhett Dusenberry with us this evening.
Yes, sir. I've had conversations with the mayor of Mooresville. He's told me in conversation that he is supportive of this. I also have Town Commissioner Rhett Dusenberry from the Mooresville Board. He'd be happy to answer any of your questions if you had him.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, Mr. McCall? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve the request, the chairman.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman, and I congratulate you again, Mr. McCall, on the economic, on your economic frugality here in establishing this office. You're doing a fine job. Any, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. I will say Mr. Dusenberry has volunteered some sweat equity to help get this thing open.
All right. Thank you, Rhett.
Thank you.
As part of the Matt McCall Economic Recovery Program.
Yes, sir.
The last administrative item is a request for approval of the January sixth and seventeenth, two thousand and twelve minutes.
Okay. Are there any corrections of these minutes? If not, floor is open for a motion of approval?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. The first one is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We have one announcement. And on the Troutman Planning Board, we also have one announcement. That brings us to appointments, two boards and commissions, the Facilities Task Force for Schools, one appointment, and I have a nominee, if it pleases the board, Mr. Jeff Tucker. I nominate Mr. Jeff Tucker. He's actually already assumed his duties in anticipation of the board approving, but it's okay. So, I would, I would move we appoint Mr. Tucker by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Board of Equalization and Review, I believe they want to postpone that till February twenty-first. Animal Grievance Committee, we have one appointment. The term for Dr. Kim Ball expires on February sixteenth. She is willing and eligible to serve again.
Nominate Dr. Ball.
Okay. Have a nomination for, for Dr. Ball from Commissioner Robson. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations and appoint Dr. Ball by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We have one appointment. Mr. Chairman, nominate Brick of Sweet. Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations and appoint Brick of Sweet by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Look over our reminder sheet here, if there are any ones you could nominate. Ms. Kincaid pointed out the fact we got...
On the, on the Central United Economic Development Commission, is there a reason why we wouldn't want to nominate either Robbie Carney or his new assistant?
Might want to talk to him, see if it's all right with him, but I don't see a problem.
Okay. I'll talk to him about that.
I'd like to draw your attention first to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. We do have ten standing vacancies there, and you have three applications in your packet this week.
I want to open the floor?
Yeah.
All right. Nominate Judith Archer, Deborah Tillman, and Deborah Wilkerson.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations and appoint Judith Archer, Deborah Tillman, and Deborah Wilkerson by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. There's a little bit there. Is there any unfinished business? Public comment, period? That's not this meeting. New business come to our attention?
Mr. Chairman, I have one, one item to offer up.
Yes, sir.
I've gave you two, two handouts, and the one I'd like to bring up first is an organizational chart, and this goes back to a conversation we had at our budget work session back in January, and has to do with the central permitting initiative that we've been undertaking. And this is something that's going along very well, actually a lot better than I ever expected, and hopefully, we will be up and running by July first. That's our, that's our target date. We're going to, our, our software is going to be probably the, the one thing that is... We're going to, our, our software is going to be probably the, the one thing that is going to push us a little bit, but hopefully we will have that done. But in anticipation of doing that, what I would request tonight is that we adopt a new organizational chart showing the central permitting division. Because this is going to be such a small entity, I'm proposing that we make this a division instead of a true department. There's only going to be five people and that this division answer directly to me. The reason for that is because the, the person running the department will have, will be dealing with both, well, planning and erosion control inspections and environmental health. And so as not to confuse jurisdictional issues and chain of command, that's why I'm proposing that it be set up this way. And I would just ask for your approval of this, of this chart. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Just to comment, for a long time I've, Joel complained, encouraged, and asked that we streamline the permitting process in this county. I think you ought to be able to go and make one stop and get any permit you need. And it looks like Mr. Smith is about to make that happen, so I'd encourage you to support this. I think it'll be good for, for our builders, cut down on their expense and frustration and have one clearinghouse to accomplish all this. So if there's no any other comments, I would offer a motion that we approve his request for this organizational chart and let him continue in this pursuit. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Next item I have is under County Manager's Report, unless there's any more new business. The next item I have, I asked David Clover just to provide me and then, so I could forward it along to you all, an update on the Specialty Services Division, just for your information. There are, things are looking pretty well. I think we're just a little behind schedule on some of our hiring, but, but we're, but we're moving along. I will point out at the bottom of the page, and I apologize, but I handed that out to you as well, under the call volume and statistics, we had estimated about 5,000 calls a year and that's basically what's, you know, driving our revenues on this and our, what we, what we hope to collect, our collection rate. And based on the calls per day, and granted, this is a limited amount of time that we're looking at, that equates out to about 5,000 a year. So it's right on the money and hopefully this stays consistent. And, and we'll try and keep you updated, especially in the beginning of this process since it is fairly new to us. And that's all I have.
Our folks are holding up pretty good over there?
Yeah, they, they are. I think they're getting a little frazzled, but David's been feverishly hiring new people to, to get them, to get them in there. And I think he's got almost all of his staff positions as far as the, the field staff and should have, should have hired, I know they've been, they're in the interview process in the last few days for the office staff.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. That's all you have, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this point, I move we go into close session for attorney-client privilege under 143-318-11A3. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.[849.12] Opposed, motion carries unanimously.[18.86][18.89](Audio cuts out.) And there'll be no action as a result of our closed session? Having said that, I'll call for a motion. We adjourn all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.